Welcome everyone to the February 2nd, 2022 Planning Board Meeting. I am Joanne Crowley, Chair of the Planning Board. I'll begin by taking roll call for quorum and all votes will be by roll call this evening. Brad Goodwin?
Present.
Will Rubenstein?
I am here.
Liz Hartsgrove?
Present.
Joanne Crowley, present. Chris Vincent and Sue Britta, I know have not arrived yet, but we will check them in as soon as they do. As allowed by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Paragraphs 18 to 25, and pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on June 16th, 2021. The Yarmouth Planning Board will hold a public meeting on Wednesday, February 2nd, 2022, at 5:30 PM via the remote access provided on the meeting agenda posted on the town website, which can be accessed at www.yarmouth.m.us under the Agendas and Minutes tab by selecting Planning Board. For remote public participation during the public comment period for public hearings or at the discretion of the Chair for public meetings, the Chair will invite the audience to comment. Online audience members can use the Raise Hand button to notify the Chair. Dial-in audience members should press *9 on their phones. All audience members will be muted until you are recognized by the Chair to participate. Once recognized, audience members are asked to identify themselves by first and last name and affiliation for the public record. Seeing that we do have a quorum, I'd like to begin the meeting. And first on our agenda is the discussion of potential zoning amendments. First up is temporary seasonal employee housing. We have perhaps, if necessary, joining us by phone this evening, Mark Grills, Building Commissioner for the Town of Yarmouth. In our packets is a planner memo dated January 28th, which contains additional information that addresses questions from our previous meeting on January 19th. As we consider and deliberate an amendment to our existing zoning bylaw, Section 405.5, 404.5, seasonal employee housing at hotels and motels. I would ask Kathy Williams to run through her summary that she provided for us in our packets and the revised amendment. Kathy?
I'd be happy to. I just want to point out that Chris Vincent is present. Sneak in there. In your packets, you do have a memo from the last meeting. I think the board was interested in getting a little bit more information, doing that little bit of more homework with regard to the Sunset Clause and what would constitute some of the building commissioner not issuing a permit and/or denying or revoking a permit. In your packet, we did talk to Town Council. The Sunset Clause can be added, but it would really need to be rewritten in a different way so that we can be sure that we retain the existing, what's allowed now for the 15% for them hotel motel employees. And only the Sunset Clause would apply to the expanded opportunities for other businesses. For comparison, I think we had, there's been some talk about, well, why do we have the Sunset Clause in the short-term rentals and not here? I think it's really a case of the short-term rental being a little bit of a larger issue that we need to address in a timely fashion to be sure that we retain those revenues from the short-term rental tax. But we wanted to put that in there maybe to give a little opportunity for a little bit further discussion on that larger topic. I do think that that Fall Summit idea that was mentioned for seasonal employee housing and also short-term rentals is a great idea. I think we should incorporate that into our memo to the Board of Selectment, as was suggested, to kind of open up that dialogue. How did it go? Talk to the different stakeholders, businesses, you know, residents. How did everything go? Talk to the different town departments. So that was really with regard to the Sunset Clause. Regarding the permitting process and the violations, the building commissioner felt that in his opinion, a violation for cause for revocation or denial would really be any violation of the laws that he enforces with regard to zoning and the general code for the town of Yarmouth. The violation process in Yarmouth is typically started with a complaint from a butter and/or notification from another town department, whether it's police, fire, or Board of Health. Because they work very closely together. Oh. Sorry, hang on a second. Susan's here. It's all, yeah, it's all remote. I know. The only other thing is I can put a mask on and we can sit together. I can take, and I can take off. I'm sorry, Susan just arrived. She thought it was in person, so she's in my office. If you wait just one minute. Can everyone hear me without the headphones?
Yes.
All right, so I get to talk in my little mask. So zoning complaints, obviously, anytime we get a zoning complaint, it's first investigated for validity. Is it really an actual violation? And if it's confirmed, then there's a written notification that gets sent to the process, to start the process and gives an opportunity for the permit holder to respond. If the permit holder does not rectify the issues or sometimes just ignores the violation letter altogether, per Section 101.3, we have the opportunity to fine them $300 per offense. And each day that the violation exists is considered a separate offense. The building commissioner can deny or suspend a permit for repeated violations. It's up to you. Okay, Susan's gonna get set up downstairs in the hearing. Ben indicated that he can set her up in the hearing room by herself.
Okay, we'll wait till, we'll wait till she logs in.
Is this where we talk sports?
For any members of the public who might just be logging in and joining us now, anybody come in Kathy besides?
No, no.
Let me know if anyone jumps in so we can just let them know what the pause is about.
I think maybe just a reminder, and maybe at the end of the meeting, we can talk about how we want to have the next meeting, whether we want it to be a mix or remote. I know some of the COVID is going down, so it might be up to you guys as to whether you want to start meeting in person.
Yeah, I think that's what we had thought about, that we'd kind of watch it and see what people are comfortable with. We can still do the, we can still do the hybrid if we wanted, right Kathy? Like we had done before?
Through April 1st. I mean, that was when the COVID emergency was extended through to, I don't know whether they'll probably, whether they'll extend that or not. Otherwise, you really have to have a quorum and the Chair in person. Some people can be remote, but you need to have a quorum and Chair.
Well, that's good to keep in mind. Okay. So the emergency isn't in fact until April 1st?
But they extended it through, yeah, it's through April 1st.
Okay.
Yeah, they extended some of the state of emergency open meeting law.
Okay.
Expansions.
That is good to know about the hybrid though. So we could, we could continue to consider a hybrid with me and three other members?
I believe so. I haven't investigated that fully, but I do know when I was taking a quick look because I wanted to check dates. I knew it was coming up. It really suspended the provisions where you had to have the Chair and a quorum in person. So I don't know whether we needed to do anything else. You can touch base with Town Council on that.
Okay.
I don't know if this means Susan's around or?
Susan, are you joining us?
I'm here. Can you see me?
No.
I can't see you.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay.
Can you see us?
I'm actually sitting in my regular seat.
So you're looking at the big screen?
All right, as long as you can hear us, Susan, we're gonna continue maybe?
Hear you and see you.
Oh, good. All right. Kathy, why don't you continue Kathy?
Yep. So I just had gone through the violation process with the fines that are allowed through the zoning bylaw. And then the building commissioner can deny or suspend a permit for repeated violations of the zoning bylaw, building code, or for life safety issues. All of the building commissioners' decisions are appealable to the Zoning Board of Appeals as well as there are also an appeal process for the Mass State Building Code as well. I think as we had discussed before, there's a lot of built-in oversight provisions in this amendment already, including that annual permitting process, the requirement for an onsite proctor, and then the natural desire for the motel hotel owners to be sure that the employees are behaving themselves because they have paying guests, they want to keep happy. And the seasonal employees have a good reason to behave because they want to maintain their housing and maintain their job. So there were a couple of small edits that were made by Town Council and by staff. If you want me, I can share the screen. Had to say yes to a lot of things before it would let me share. Okay. So anything that's in gray was something that was suggested by Town Council when he reviewed it?
We don't, we don't see anything Kathy. Okay. Oh, here we go.
You're good now?
Yep.
Yeah.
Great. Thank goodness. Anything that's in gray was a suggestion by Town Council. And the first one is in purpose, which is just, I think, a slight rewording and emphasizing that it's seasonal employees of Yarmouth businesses. And then the second one down there is just giving a definition of seasonal employee by it being considered employees that employed in Yarmouth for no more than seven months. It's a little repetitive to the second one, but that's the definition of an employee where the second one is saying the temporary housing will only be running through April 1st and October 31st. And then, oops, the section in yellow here that's been changed is it's just kind of to maintain that same wording that's in this consistent, I guess, kind of with the short-term rentals, which is just rewording it to talk about local and state regulations, including but not limited to building and fire codes, health codes, water supply, and wastewater disposal. And then the last one of seven is kind of came out of, people were saying, well, what's, what would constitute something that would be a violation? And so we kind of added the same wording again from the short-term rentals that no seasonal employees shall adversely affect the surrounding properties and shall not generate excessive noise, vibration, or odors or other effects that interfere with any reasonable person's enjoyment of their property. Just to kind of give an idea of what that code of conduct would be.
May I ask a question on, or have a comment on this, Madam Chairman?
Yes, of course, Chris. Go ahead, Mr. Vincent.
Yeah, if this isn't, sorry, to me, kind of laughable, excessive noise, vibration, odors, does that really need to be in a, in a bylaw?
Noise perhaps, the other ones?
Sure, but we have a noise bylaw in the town of Yarmouth already.
Which only applies from?
Vibration, odors? I just think that that whole thing should be stricken. Thank you.
Kathy, can you just remind us who had made the suggestion on this insertion?
I made the suggestion because we basically talk about rules and code of conduct, but when we were talking about from the planning board, well, what would constitute violation of that? We really didn't say anything about noise at all in the bylaw about excessive noise. The town bylaw for noise only applies from 11 PM to 7 AM.
And why should it be any different for this?
Doesn't have to be.
Yeah. I'm just, it's just, it's a, it seems to me to be a bit of an overreach. We already have something in the, in the bylaw. If they're causing noise, then a guest at the hotel will say something to the proctor. The proctor will go and say something to these people. But, you know.
Any other comments with regard to what Chris said to say?
Joanne, can you hear me?
Yes, Susan.
I'm sorry, I didn't know. What did Kathy actually give a definition for vibration?
No, it's simply the word.
And what's it supposed to mean?
It's something that's in the bylaw in many different particular areas. I think it's mostly to do with if you're doing something that's creating vibrating excessively. I can't imagine that seasonal employees would be generating vibration and we can certainly take that whole thing out. It's totally up to you guys.
Kathy, is it used in other sections of the town bylaws? Is it, is that word used other places?
Usually, it's, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead Brad.
It's usually used on home businesses if somebody's, you know, you know, running a saw at, you know, X time o'clock, you know, next door. You just want to protect the general neighborhood. Hotels usually aren't sconced the neighborhood. And now that Mr. Davenport has sold off his properties where they're, they've got houses in neighborhoods, I really don't think that's going to come into play. So I, I think Chris is on to something. I think if he, if he wants to, you know, maybe strike the whole thing.
Last and language in mind, Brad, do you want me to try it?
Sure.
What if it said, "No seasonal employee shall adversely affect the surrounding properties or create other effects that interfere with any reasonable person's enjoyment of their property." So I basically took out the "and shall" clause and added "create" after the word "or." I can read it again. Want me to read it real quick?
Yep, please, Joe.
"No seasonal employee shall adversely affect the surrounding properties or create other effects that interfere with any reasonable person's enjoyment of their property." Just to take it, just trying to take it to the next step so that we can?
Comments on that, Mr. Vincent?
I still don't think that it needs to be in there. I mean, how do you?
I don't know. I was just trying to?
What's an effect? I mean, it's just, I think it's just?
I get it.
We're trying to, and you can't think of everything that's going to happen. So if people have a problem with it, any noise, they're just going to say something to the hotel owner who's gonna hopefully correct the problem. I think it just needs to be as simple as that. The town doesn't need to be trying to write something into a code about every possible effect. And I think vagaries are not good either. We know what good behavior is. We know what good conduct is. And leave it at that.
Any other, any other comments on this?
Joanne, could I just clarify one thing? The red and the yellow were suggested by the Town Council. Is that correct?
Anything that's highlight, was highlighted in gray was Town Council, highlighted in yellow was staff.
Is what?
Staff.
Staff, okay.
Anything that's not highlighted was, has been in there all along.
Okay, I think if the Town Council is recommending it and the staff is recommending it, I think it's a good idea to include it, although I agree with Chris. We don't want to get too micro. But I do like Will's suggestion about, about dropping the "shall", the example paragraph and just say, you know, "shall adversely affect surrounding properties and shall not create blah, blah, blah", and take out excessive noise, vibration, orders, or other effects. Just take out those examples and just continue on with the rest of the concept.
Just, just to clarify?
Susan, Susan, we need to, we need to clarify one point.
The Town Council didn't recommend that section. It was staff only, just so you, that's your decision.
Yeah, Town Council did not recommend that language.
Okay.
And did not make a suggestion for that change.
Okay, so, so this is a staff recommended. Kathy, in the original document that came in from the proposing group, from the, from the chamber group, did they have this language in there?
No.
Okay.
Why don't we, why don't we let them start with a clean slate? Why don't we take it out and have our meeting in October after the season's over and see if we goofed or not? But why don't we treat people as adults and give it a shot?
Any, any further discussion on the removal of that language? Okay, Kathy, I think you have a signal from the board that will?
I will take it out.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent.
Thank you.
So are we okay with the rest of it?
Yeah, any other comments? We've all had a chance to see this. We see this in various forms at various times. Any further comments on this draft amendment to the zoning bylaw? Yes, Liz?
I'm Chair. I have just a question on the process for the building commissioner when it comes to making a decision whether or not a violation warrants a non-renewal decision. Is that? I just want to know sort of the thought process because I just want to make sure that applicants or businesses are treated equally and fair when those decisions are made. And some violations aren't as strong as others. So if somebody is in violation of an hours or, I think this, actually, this is short-term rentals, not the, which one are we doing? I'm sorry. I think we're talking about seasonal.
This is seasonal.
I'm so sorry. Talking about all sorts of zoning. I'm so sorry. And it's been a long day. So we're talking about the seasonal housing, right? Okay, all right. I will refrain and then pull back and I will come back when is the right time. Please pardon my mishap there. Thank you.
Okay, and any, any other, any other comments or questions that we would want to direct to, to Mark? He is available now for the next half an hour or so. Otherwise, we're good, we're good to go on this, this edition of it Kathy, with the, the one change that we've all agreed to. Okay, next up, short-term rentals. At our last meeting, you know, we continued to deliberate, deliberate on this one as well. And Kathy's prepared some edits for this as well, updating some materials. And the revised amendment is in our package. Kathy, if you'd walk us through what changes have happened there?
All right, I don't know what just happened to my computer.
And the most recent version is one she just sent this afternoon.
I'm gonna pull it up if that's okay.
Oh, good. Great.
I'm sorry, my computer is not happy camper today. All right, there we go. Okay, so this is a case where we've got some additional edits because I had some correspondence emails back and forth with Town Council. And I've also, Mark and I had a meeting with Bruce Murphy, the Health Director, and Kevin Hook, who's the Housing Inspector. So that as we go through here, anything that is, hopefully everyone can be able to read it. Anything that's in gray was from Town Council and I'll just go through each one. So he just had a minor edit to add in STRs for, in the definition of short-term rentals. He just added, he wanted to emphasize I, underlining not eligible here and then had a dash with family-related. Sorry, my coloring was a little off here. But what's in, what's in Cyan is, came out of the conversations with the Health Department. So they wanted it to be all short-term rentals shall be registered annually through the Yarmouth Health Department in accordance with General Bylaw, Chapter 108, Occupancy of Buildings, and shall adhere to all health and safety requirements, including occupancy limitations based on inspections. They set the occupancy rate when they do the, as part of their inspections. And that's why that first inspection that they have is so important. We had quite a bit of discussion last, last meeting with where it can be viewed from the exterior of the home. The Health Department really didn't think that that was necessary either. So I told them I would cross that out and have a discussion with you guys this evening. Mass General Law there in yellow is 64G, not 65G. They did have, this from the Board of Health, is they typically don't like to see rentals, short-term rentals for, for less than two days and they prefer three days. So renting for less than, we have 24 consecutive hours is prohibited. They were suggesting that maybe it be renting for less than two or three consecutive days is prohibited. I think that's a big thing for, for discussion. The other thing is, you, well, wanted to be sure, they were asking questions about, what if people have RVs and campers and sleeping tents? So we just added, use of RVs, campers, or sleeping tents is prohibited. And then the last item there really is just having those, those same codes that are being required to be adhered to again in case you need to identify something that might be a violation. The last edit is related to Sunset Clause. And he just wanted to be sure that this section allows short-term rentals, but he also wants to refer, we made some changes to the use table so that those changes to the use table also are part of the, of the Sunset Clause if you're interested in doing that. So I'm gonna stop sharing for now as you guys discuss.
All right, any discussion, further discussion on this? Again, we've seen this over several meetings. Any, any additional comments or concerns with the edits since our last get-together? Hearing none. Let's move on to the petitioned article for 17 Berry Avenue.
This is more of just an FYI for you guys. So Robert C. Avara did go ahead and get the necessary signatures for a petitioned article for annual town meeting. It has been certified by the town clerk. So it will require a public hearing and it will require, you know, the board to have some type of recommendation or not recommendation of it. I am working with the town clerk on the specific procedures to make sure that I, we, we get this right. This is the first petition zoning article that's come to, to the town since I've been here. So we just want to make sure we get the, the rules and regs right. I'm, I just don't know whether it needs to be a separate public hearing or whether it can be part of our hearing or how that might go. So she's, she's looking into that. She has some emails out to the state to try and get some additional information on that.
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Yes, Will.
A couple of things. First of all, this is for the same parcel that we deliberated on last year.
Yes, it is.
Across from the 99 yesterday.
Right. And then my second, two more questions, sorry, bonus question. For the signatures, they don't have to be a butters. They just have to be Yarmouth residents, right?
They have to be registered voters in the Yarmouth residents, yes.
Okay, that's fair.
Registered voters, Will.
Right, sorry, registered voters. And, and maybe Kathy, I don't know, I can't remember how long you've been in this position, but maybe Brad can give us just a little perspective about if this has happened before, just to help educate us for the newer board members about when there is a citizen petitioned?
It's, it's actually kind of exciting. It's, it's fun to watch democracy.
Okay, well, let's go then. Let's do this.
It's, it's fun. And I'm assuming, and I hate that word, so let's just presuming that Robert is going to defend his article on town meeting floor?
He would have to.
Yeah, okay, he's gonna come before the board and he's gonna state his case on why he thinks they should be lumped together. And on one side, he's gonna say, people don't want to build a house here. On the other side, he's gonna say, I'd like to get a larger business lot. Okay, if we rezone it by the town with two-thirds vote, it goes. The hardest part is going to be for this board to give a thumbs up or thumbs down.
Right, so it's sort of like a recommendation piece. When you go to town meeting, it'll say, Planning Board, recommend, blah, blah, blah. Okay, got it.
So and it'll be up to the town, towns voters to say, you know, whether our recommendation carries weight or not. But I've seen it go both ways. We're, you know, various boards, so we don't recommend. It still goes ahead and it wins. So it should be fun. Should be fun.
Joanne, could I ask a question Kathy?
Yeah, certainly, Susan.
Kathy, the, the residents that appeared at the initial meeting when this was discussed, have they been notified of this, this petition? Is there, is there, was the process where they, anyone?
Not yet.
admitted that night?
Not yet. No, not, not yet, to my knowledge. And I don't believe anything gets done with the No, not, not yet, to my knowledge, and I don't believe anything gets done with the clerk's office. I would assume that, that the board would also like some notification to the abutters, similar to what was done for your public hearing, so that they're aware that this has, has come back.
Is there an obligation on the part of the town, either through the clerk or through this board, to notify the people that participated in the first hearing that this petition is being circulated? Is there any kind of legal obligation we have?
I don't think there's any legal obligation. I just think it's something that I think it should be done. Because they think the issue's over. They think it was, it was addressed and put to bed. And they may not fully be monitoring, you know, the town meeting and know that this is something that has come back.
You know, I think, I think we have an obligation or someone should be notifying them that this is.
Well, I want to, I'd like to codify slightly, Susan. Is this going to be posted in a legal notice in a small corner of the Cape Cod Times? Yes, so we are going to notify the, the towns voters. But I think, I think if you want to send out an email, because you have that wide email list, as a member of a town board or a member of a citizen to let people know, I would, you could do so. It's just, let's, let's wait until it, it comes in before a public hearing, i.e. when a public hearing is scheduled. Because this may fall through the cracks and something may happen. So let's make sure we get it on the docket first. And then you can, you know, alert the, alert the crowds.
Does the planning board have any obligation since we had a hearing on this and residents appeared? Do we have any kind of obligation either procedurally or just in terms of process to notify people that an issue that came up in front of the board is now back in front of the board again?
If I, if I may, Kathy, I, I think that Kathy has said that she's working back through the town clerk. We've not, it's been a long time since a petitioned zoning article has come to us and there are probably lots of questions like that in terms of what our obligations are, what our responsibilities are, how the hearing will be held, when it will be held, all of that. So what I would like to do, Kathy, you've got a couple of questions from us now on this. So why don't we try to get as much information as we can as to how this, excuse me, how this will work with, with a petitioned zoning article? And whatever we're supposed to do, we'll do.
Yeah, I, I don't think you were obligated to notify the abutters previously, but I think it's a courtesy. And it certainly is a courtesy when the planning board was proposing it. But I can certainly, I just don't think that they, that the clerk gets into that type of specificity.
Oh, okay.
Be able to answer that per se. I think it's more a case of what, what is your best practices that you have been doing all along? And you have always been notifying the abutters of properties that you've rezoned since I've been here. Unless it was like a minor thing and it was a huge, because we did have some sections where we did deal with parcels that were multi-zoned. And it was just like a little bit in the back kind of thing. But we normally make an effort to notify people of any zoning changes that affects their property or their.
Okay, okay, good. Susan, you, you okay with that answer?
I just want to make sure that the people that appeared in front of this board and objected to this are notified that the issue is back in front of the board again. I don't care whether it's the clerk, I don't care whether it's a notification in the paper. I just want to make sure that we are dealing in full transparency here. This is a huge issue on that street. And, you know, I don't want to have any of those residents think that we were, you know, taking action behind their back without them being fully informed. I think Kathy's right. It, it's not necessarily, you know, a legal obligation, but simply out of, more than courtesy, it's good public service. That's my only concern. I don't want to have them come up, because I live in that neighborhood. And I'm just looking at these addresses, virtually none of these addresses are in the neighborhood. I think two are close, but virtually nothing else is in the neighborhood.
Well, and Susan, that's why I was asking just about, I looked at the addresses also. And that's okay, that they got what they needed to get. And also, Madam Chair, we have a process where we have other zoning amendments that we're discussing. And I think that timetable is relatively short now, isn't it? To get those all lined up. So we're probably going to be having a hearing relatively soon, I would imagine.
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion on this? Kathy, anything else for us on this one?
I guess I just, I would like to talk a little bit about the schedule.
Okay.
That's all right. The, the, it appears as though the schedule's a little expedited for this annual town meeting. Normally, we would just have placeholders for zoning with kind of like a, a brief description. And we would be providing our actual article and explanations later in the process. It looks like the Board of Selectmen are going to be taking their first look at the warrant on the eighth. And I've been asked by the administration to develop a draft article and draft explanation for the zoning, understanding that nothing's set in stone until you guys have finalized your hearing, had a chance to look at the explanation and edit it. But I think what they're looking for is just something to give the Board of Selectmen the flavor of what you guys are looking at. So I will just incorporate the, the red lines into articles and try and come up with a simple explanation. All of that will be something that we will look at, at our next meeting on, I think, the 16th. So I'm going to wing it.
Okay, that was kind of a late add to Kathy's workload today. So we won't get a chance to really see it. And I've, I think it's, we're in good hands with her handling it. So you'll let us know in two weeks how it all works out. Actually, we'll be there on, on February 8th anyway. So, okay, I just want, I'm reminding myself that we do have a couple of members of the public, if they are interested.
We're down to one.
Okay.
It's Jack Hines.
Okay, and I don't, did Jack, I don't see that he's raised his hand or has any concerns?
No.
Okay, let's continue. Next on our agenda is the local comprehensive plan. In a note to us on Monday, Kathy advised of the request by the town administrator for an additional, separate, distinct article for the annual town meeting or related to an allocation for the long, for the local comprehensive plan. So Kathy, why don't you walk us through what you know about?
Yeah.
This, and I'll just offer one experience note here. Typically, free cash grants are bundled in a single article. Any ones that I've been involved with evaluating or recommending through the capital budget committee have always been bundled, big and small. And so for this particular item, that's a request for free cash, will it be a bit of a spotlight on it? I'm not sure if that's good or bad, but it is a different way of handling it and handling the process at annual town meeting. So Kathy, why don't you walk through what you got here?
Sure, I think the actual article itself is relatively simple. I think the question is obviously the dollar value. So basically, just to see the town vote to transfer X amount of money, that's $150,000 in here from free cash and appropriate the sum for the purpose of updating local comprehensive plan or act on anything relative there too. I think the explanation, we tried to keep it relatively simple. Kind of saying through the hard work of community and guidance for the planning board, a vision plan was created in 2021 that highlights Yarmouth as a great place to live, work, play and learn. And then it continues to go on and indicating with that it's the foundation for our local comprehensive plan, which serves as our long-term master plan, guiding balance and profitable growth and redevelopment of our community. I wanted to emphasize that many sections of the Yarmouth, the existing LCP are over 20 years old and they really need to be updated to reflect our current values and viewpoints. And then kind of say, well, what does the LCP do and why do we want it? We want to identify specific strategies and initiatives and action items to be implemented over time that meet the desires and needs of our community as expressed through that vision plan that's developed. So, but also I think the LCP will also be helpful as we seek other grant. This is always like, what's, what's the really good point of why do we want to have an LCP of seeking grant funding from other outside sources and fund initiatives and actions that are outlined in our local comprehensive plan? So just basically emphasize that we want to continue with the momentum from the vision plan and engage consultants to supplement town staff and the planning board to update the LCP. And hopefully that by hiring consultants will expedite the process to reach this last goal of the planning, of the Board of Selectmen. And I guess the planning board as well.
Yes, Will.
Couple of questions, if I could. First of all, I think, isn't the LCP required? Or is that too strong a word? I don't know.
I'm not sure it's required. I mean, there's a whole sec, there's a whole part of this about LCP and the certification through the Cape Cod Commission. Didn't really emphasize that in the explanation because people have different feelings about the Cape Cod Commission. Obviously, if you have a certified, a certified LCP, it means things. You can, that will help us with our, our redesignation of our growth incentive zone. It helps with the chapter H, which does regional ERI thresholds. It also would allow us to participate in development agreements. I mean, there is the opportunity to, to add that in there.
Well, I, I'm bringing it up because I'm trying to help, I'm trying to fast forward to town meeting and think about, well, what are, what would people ask in response to this? And to try to, I don't know, to try to anticipate some of those questions by providing them in the answers in the explanation. The second part would be, is this one of those things where the select board could recommend? You know, I mean, if we're, as, as Madam Chair has been very firm on this matter, thanks to her, you know, it would be nice to have some support on this. So it's not just the seven of us saying, we need this money. And I guess the third question is, what happens if it fails? Where's the money come from? And, you know, again, just asking as the new guy, I think these are, these are helpful. And I agree with Joanne with what you're saying before, currently on the CBC now, you know, to have this be brought out into the sun has some advantages. And I do agree that there's momentum and there is, it's not the first time the town, we would hope that most people coming to town meeting have heard about the vision plan. Now we're trying to connect the dots to the next part. And it's logical to me, it's logical to us. But I would hope, Madam Chair, that we could do everything in our humble powers to make sure that we do get this. And not to mention, lastly, the last part of Kathy's email, which indicated perhaps a lower number, which of course is of grave concern. Sorry, that was a lot, but I just.
No, that's, that's, that's fine, all legitimate concerns. If, if I may, Kathy, Kathy and I have had a conversation about the amount. You know, the amount is a fairly broad estimate. And Kathy and the, the town administrator are working to get some real examples of what this might really cost from communities who have done this, who are similar to us. So the number will be adjusted to a, a one that has some relative, relative history with others. And what we, what we don't want to have happen is for it to be a number that doesn't, doesn't get us what we think we need. But, so Kathy is working with the town administrator and others to secure a number that would be, would work for, for everyone. So Kathy, go ahead.
We, we did do some initial research to kind of come up with the $150,000. I mean Mashpee has $150,000, but that's including providing a visioning process through that. Harwich allocated 200,000 in a, in a previous town meeting. Grower has about 124. Brewster only had 70,000 and that excludes the vision because they did like, like we did, a separate visioning process. They also have, if it's the same visioning team, I think the chair of that committee was a retired planner. So I think they got a lot of horsepower out of him, which is wonderful. I think Born was about 85,000. Born was done by the, I think the previous consultant who had done it. And it was kind of more of a, a smaller firm and they kind of banged it out. They are the only ones who are certified under the current RPP. Everyone else may have certified LCPs, but it's under a, a previous RPP. I think the two things to keep in mind is we are obviously going to have a wonderfully updated housing production plan soon, which will be nicely incorporated. So that's one thing that we don't have to worry necessarily about the housing section. And then we also, Kelly Grant, our conservation administrator, is looking, requesting quotes for an update to our open space and recreation plan, hoping to have a draft by this fall. So having those two documents already updated, I can see how, yeah, we may, we may be able to do it with, with less money and the fact that we already did our visioning separately. But we are, we are doing a little bit more research to kind of come up, come up with the number. I don't know what the free crash, cash grants are looking like and where that, that money is being allocated elsewhere. And that unfortunately might play a role in it as well.
So this draft article Kathy is, is going with the explanation is going to the Board of Selectmen as part of the package for the eighth?
Correct.
Okay, yes, Liz?
I think one of the things to keep in mind is that when we're comparing other communities and what they've spent, the ones that you've referenced, Kathy, they don't go from Bayside to Oceanside. And they're not as large as Yarmouth. They're not as populated as Yarmouth a year round. And I'm not 100% certain, but I'm not familiar, so I could be completely wrong. But they don't have three very distinct, different villages such as ours that have different personalities and temperaments and history. And as much as, as wonderful as a housing production plan is and an open space and recreation plan is, the local comprehensive plan has snippets of it, but it shouldn't be a mirrored thing. So it should not be identical and just copy, paste and move forward. It really shouldn't. It's more of a comprehensive look and incorporating those things, but it's not all of that. So I really think that our ask is very minimal. To be honest, for the size of our community and the heavy lift that we're asking, not asking, but we're being asked to do. And we're telling everybody, this is what it should be. If you want a product that is of value and is going to project us for the next 10-plus years, this is what it's going to cost. And, and I really actually would prefer hearing from the Selectmen. It's their warrant, not the town manager's warrant for separating out a free cash grant. This is not his document. It's, it's the Selectmen's. So I would actually like more of his recommendation or at least justification as to why he thinks it really should be a separate article rather than be combined with free cash grants and, and be held out on its own. I really just, it makes me queasy, so to be honest. So thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Susan.
I just like, I'd like to, you know, piggyback on what, what Will and what, what was just said. I think it, I think we are vulnerable unless we can answer the question as Will said, exactly what are we going to ask these consultants to do? We're vulnerable to not having an answer to that. I don't think we have an answer to that yet. They're going to be updating, updating the last comprehensive plan. Specifically, what are they going to be updating? If housing and environment are going to be covered, or at least the bulk of updating will be done by someone else. Exactly what are we going to be asking a consultant to do for $150,000? And I think we need to be able to answer that. I think Liz is right. And Will is right, we need a lot of specificity. If not, I think Liz is right, it ought to roll back right into the office of the administrator and let him go get the free money for us. Unless we can justify this, I think it's, it's just not, it's not specific enough to convince a voter that they would, especially since we were talking two weeks ago about the lack of personnel. $150,000 could hire two people to do enforcement for, for, you know, Mark and, and maybe Kelly herself. So I don't mind asking, but I think we need to be, we have to have a lot more detail about exactly what, if we got this money or even a fraction of it, what are we going to be asking a consultant to do? What are they going to be updating?
Thank you, Susan. Brad?
I think, I think we've got some time. We've got a few weeks at least to crunch the numbers. And I'm saying crunch the numbers because when I go in and I ask for amount of money for people to advertise with me, I lay it all out where it is. I just don't go walking in and saying it's $150,000. If it comes out to $151,000, that looks almost more, more real than just the flat 150. But Karen and Kathy are going to crunch the numbers. And Karen's been through this game before, and I'm using game just with quotes. It's something that I think the town is not thrilled to do, but it's something the town should do. And I think, I think if we lay our case out. And I think, I think if we lay our case out with the help of Karen and Kathy, I think they'll give us the money. It's something that needs to be done. We're going to hold our nose and do it. I'm not thrilled with the commission, but even I think we have to update it every 20 years. And so I think in the next few weeks, we're going to have some ammunition and one of us will stand up and, and state our case. And you all are very good at doing that. I've seen you in action. So I think we're okay.
Kathy, I just, one other, one other comment. The other thing that's an unknown variable is, is the support staff that any one of those towns have assisting their town planner. We have no idea, or maybe you do, but in some towns, it isn't just a, you know, a one-armed paper hanger. They have more staff and therefore need a resource of a consultant at a, at a lower rate. For you, it's all of your arms and legs. So I, I think it is, I think it is worthy to put together what the bones of an RFP might look like, what we want them to do. Are we in any position to try to do that at this point?
I certainly have been looking at RFPs and seeing what we might want to be incorporating. And I even do have like an outline of what I think might be included in the LCP in order to meet the certification requirements. So, so I have done some of that. We're not going to know whether it's, you know, 140,000, 120,000, until you start getting bids and people start giving us cost proposals for this work. And then we can evaluate, you know, the quality of the consultant that we're getting and evaluate them. And then look at the cost proposals that are provided. So we're not going to have a definitive number. And I don't think most communities do have a definitive number when they get the money. They have an idea of, okay, this is the kind of level of effort that takes to do these types of things. And I can certainly do further investigation with the different town planners on Cape Cod. I do know that some people have been moving forward a little bit more, just to kind of get an idea of, of those questions and see if I can.
I'm, I'm thinking just a, a, a broad scope of work would be helpful.
Oh, yeah, okay.
You know, for, for those of us who don't, you know, maybe aren't as familiar with what all the components of a local comprehensive plan are, what would be, what would be your first shot at a scope work?
I'm, I'm a little unclear on what might be coming from the Assistant Town Administrator's Office and asking CEDC. I'm not fully clear on what that marketing study, he was talking about would entail and how that would dovetail into the local comprehensive plan. But I think what I can do is kind of like, this is what I kind of see at the outline looking like. And, and I don't want to have a ginormous document, in all honesty. I want to keep it somewhat simple. Don't want to have five pages of statistics. I don't think that that's necessary in graphs and charts. I think we want to get the salient data out there, you know, the, the statistical information that's important that, you know, helps define some of the decisions that we're making. But it's not going to be a data junkie document. I think it should have like, kind of almost somewhat like our data sheets where we had some trends and some general information with regard to what's, what's happening, what we have going on. And then what are the goals we have and how are we going to get there? So, you know, I'd like to think that each section might be, you know, like a four pager. I mean, let's not have each section be 25 pages because it's just not something that's going to be read.
And it sounds like there'll be reference documents that would be appended to it anyway. That would be important levels of detail that would be covered via an appendix.
Right.
Okay. All right. So, well, on Tuesday, we'll see what the reactions are from the Board of Selectmen. I will, I will do my best to convince them that a, a, a substantial sum, I shouldn't use substantial, but a, a, a reasonable sum to do this right is what we're requesting. We'll see where, we'll see where we go. And try to get some sense, Liz, as to, you know, it is, it is, you know, the Board of Selectmen do weigh in on all of these. And again, my concern is that typically for free grants, and I went back and looked at other town warrants where things have been requested for hundreds of thousands of dollars and they're a one-line item. And so I'm, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about the, the spotlight that this might be on. Anyway, enough said on that. Anything more from anyone else on this? Okay. So I believe we are up to meeting minutes. May I have a motion to accept the meeting minutes of January 5th?
I would be happy to make that motion. Whoa.
And may I have a second?
Second.
We need to do, we need to do a roll call. Brad Goodwin?
He nodded yes.
I'm sorry. My mic, I thought my mic was on. I apologize, Madam Chair.
That's all right. Will Rubenstein?
Yes.
Susan Britta?
Yes.
Liz Hartsgrove?
Yes.
Chris Vincent?
Yes.
Okay, just do a quick. Okay. May I have a motion to accept the meeting minutes of January 19th, 2022?
I would love to make that motion.
And I, and I will.
It was getting awkward. It was getting awkward.
Again, we'll do a roll call. Brad Goodwin?
Approve.
Chris Vincent?
Abstain.
Susan Britta?
Yes.
Will Ruben, Will, I already did you, right?
No, but you didn't.
Will, Will Rubenstein?
Madam Chair, yes.
Looking at my list instead of looking at your face.
It's all good. Here I am. Yes.
Liz Hartsgrove?
Yes.
And Joanne Crowley, yes. Okay. Kathy has sent along a couple of sets of ZBA decisions. I've taken a look at them. I don't, I don't have any questions. Anyone else? Any questions on those? Okay. Committee updates. Any committee updates from staff, from members? Yes, Will.
We had a preliminary CBC discussion about incorporating the school CBC budget requests. But more homework needs to be done. And we are going to celebrate Valentine's Day, Madam Chair, by having a discussion on 14th about basically now having to incorporate all of the other departmental requests that we had ranked and now putting the school request in there. It's, it's some tricky business because we're also trying to figure out percentages and all kinds of other fun things. But I guess what I'm trying to say is the school building CBC requests are still in process. Thank you.
I, I'd like to just offer again, a little experience having been where you are. Make sure, and I'm sure Sandy Fife will do this, find out what the town of Dennis is doing with their capital budget. And how much of the request, since it's usually the prorated share that we pick up, if it's on their agenda for their discussion and approval. Typically, we had, you know, in cases, in many cases, I can remember where we approved and Dennis' capital budget said no. Kept, Dennis said yes, we said no, and nothing happened. So.
Understood. Thank you. Well, we're also trying to make sure that the implications don't, don't result in an increase in budget. You know, where the money is coming from, how it's being sorted out. There've been, to be fair, there've been some significant changes, you know, in the administration of the district. And we're trying to have as much grace as possible. But, you know, all the other departments did, did the thing they were supposed to do at the time they were supposed to do it. So now we're kind of rushing at the end here. So we're getting there. Thank you for your advice.
Any other, any other committee updates from members? I have, I have two.
Just quickly, can I give an update?
Yes, Susan. Go ahead.
Drive-In Site Committee met Monday afternoon. Very productive meeting we gave. We were zeroing in on the various types of design for the boardwalk, which is, which will be a big step forward for us. There was also a very healthy discussion about the traffic patterns in and out of the site. The consultant was working with the police department. We're trying to have it not only functional, but have it look nice. And then the third major decision that was made, it might sound glamorous, but it was a big decision about where to put the bathrooms. And that was a big decision that's been made. I think we've given the consultant enough direction now to start firming up that, that particular aspect of the, of the plan. And then we started discussions on two items of interest. One will be the launch for the kayaks, what, what it's going to look like. The location is pretty certain with how it's going to look and how it's going to function. We started that discussion as well as just the initial tip-off discussion about possible naming for the, for the site itself. We currently call it River Walk Park. And there were discussions about maybe calling it River Walk Memorial Park and having it being used as a place to memorialize or at least recognize contributions from significant town leaders and, and other, of course, other things that are worthy of, of being memorialized. And so that's, that's moving forward. But we have a big milestone coming up in, I think Kathy, it's the next four weeks, right? We have to get design, is it?
Yeah, we really need to finalize the 30% design to get everything solidified so they can start cranking on the permit plans and get the permitting going.
Getting there. I mean, as I said, significant decisions are being made. The next big one, I think, will be the design exactly, actually of the boardwalk. We, we were presented with a, yet another opportunity, another design Monday night, which everyone thought was terrific. Lots of conversations about whether we want the slats to go vertical or horizontal. And, you know, will people be resting their feet on the horizontal ones and will kids be climbing on it? And, but it's, it's, although it's, it sounds humorous, it's a huge issue with the Conservation Commission because of the amount of sunlight that it lets into the marsh. So while it has to be pretty, it also has to meet some, some requirements of the Conservation Commission. But we're getting there. We're getting there. Very, we're getting there.
Great update. Thank you. I have, I have two. On January 24th, a RAC committee met. And we reviewed the owner's project manager RFQ. We were briefed by and, and looked at the, the, the proposal that Jeff Colby had put together and the team that was associated with them. There was a selection committee to choose the owner's project manager. And at, at the Board of Selectmen's meeting last night, they've made a recommendation. And we reviewed the, the, the components of that. And of course, the chair, Chris, Kurt Sears was as part of the selection committee. And last night, they made a recommendation for Wright Pierce to be the OPM. At the same meeting, we also reviewed the notice of project change, which is part of the comprehensive wastewater management plan. There was an executive summary put together by C.D. Smith, C.D. M. Smith for our review. Kathy was at the meeting with me and that also was presented to the Board of Selectmen last night. I'd like to put a shout out to both Kathy and the Assistant Town Manager for an oversight where we, we didn't specifically mention the vision plan. And I missed it. Kathy caught it and, and Bill Scott caught it. So.
Bill Scott caught it.
Yeah, Bill Scott really did catch it in terms of the outreach and how important this was. So the, the, the final report that went to the board and that will be submitted to the state included that language about the vision. So thank you, Kathy, for putting that together so quickly. The other, the other meeting was CEDC, which was the following day on the 25th. And we are beginning the process of developing the RFP for the marketing consultant that we, the town retains right now. It's the Chamber of Commerce. That term of the contract is up in August of this year. And we need to get a publicly advertised RFP out in the street. So we reviewed the components of that and we'll be looking at that again. One other thing that we're reviewing in anticipation that there may be various constituencies that want to come to us, the committee, for an allocation from the, from the preservation fund. Karen and Ca- Karen Green and Kyle Pendecini are putting together a standardized request form. Not unlike what CBC uses, Will, in some ways. You know, what the project is, why it's needed, is it a replacement? Is it new? And so they're working to more formalize some kind of a process for us to start to chew on.
And Madam Chair, Mr. Scott is also streamlining CBC in a very much-needed way. So he has a lot of cool ideas and I think once we get to the next cycle, I think we'll start to see even better flow.
Yeah, yeah. No, it's all, all good for sure. That's it for me on committee updates. Any board member items? Yes, Liz?
Yeah, I actually, I would just want to make sure that we acknowledge the passing of our board member, Tom Barron, last week and, and just mentioned how much we've learned from him. And his dedication really is unmatched and something, again, that we can, he didn't just walk the walk and talk, I mean, he talked the talk, but he walked the walk as well. And I was very honored to sit by him for two years and Brad, I'm sure longer. And all of us can acknowledge his impact in a positive manner for his dedication to our community, his love for our community. And, and he will be missed. And he's, yeah. So thank you.
Very much. Appreciate that. I, I'm not sure if I mentioned it at the last meeting, but I did go to the funeral mass and I had the pleasure of meeting his wife. And she was, she was delightful. And I expressed the, 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 the board sentiments as, as well as I could. And she was very appreciative. Members of the Board of Selectmen were there and other committees were there. So I thought, I thought the town was really fairly well represented there. But thank you, Liz, for that. Very nice. Thank you.
I just ask a question of Kathy. I noticed that this, the state surveyors are out on 28 now. Not, not down the west, you know, down toward the split. Are we, you had mentioned earlier last year that there's a working group or you're in a working group, working with the state. This is on the water project and that, of course, a long-range plan. Is that, is that still the case? I mean, are we still sort of involved with the state at this point? Or what is our involvement with the state at this point in terms of the design and planning?
For the research, Mastioti's resurfacing project?
No, this is the, the way, you know, the wastewater, yes, they're going to, the state's going to resurface 28. But they're, you know, the, the sidewalk construction and all that kind of stuff. Is that?
Right. Yeah.
That at all? Are we partners with them at all in that?
They've, they, what they typically do is they submit their 25% plans, that the consultant's 25% plans goes to everybody. It goes to all the different honeycombs in Mastioti, which has dozens and dozens, seems like, different divisions. And then it comes to the town. I did comment on it. They specifically asked that it not be presented to anybody else because they're waiting for the actual public hearing when they've taken everyone's comments and they've edited it and they've made changes in order to incorporate all of those comments. So it's a work in progress. I don't have any idea when the public hearing would be scheduled for that. But I, I did provide a, a comment letter on it.
Okay. So, but I mean, we do, we do, we do have someone in there. In other words, we're not going to be blindsided in a way that, that we kind of were over at Cape Cod Commission where, you know, they decided the poll was going to happen, whether we complained or not.
Yeah, I, I, I think Mastioti is much more sympathetic or understanding or wants to work with communities in order to have a project that everyone's interested in moving forward with. Sympathetic or understanding or wants to work with communities in order to have a project that everyone's in, interested in moving forward with. I don't know when they might, um, be presenting, you know, that project to, to the Board of Selectmen, but typically, um. Because they've been in many respects bitten before about projects going too far. And then like, once a community realizes what's going on, they say, no, 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 we don't, we don't want that. So one of my comments was, I think there needs to be a lot more public outreach in order to identify, uh, what's being proposed here and how it might impact, um, the properties.
Yeah, good. Okay. Thank you.
Just a quick, brief, uh, jump in of history, the, uh, Small Duck and Donuts, uh, right across from the South Yarmouth Post Office and, uh, Our Lady of the Highway, that corner. DOT was going to clean that corner up. And just like Kathy, as you, uh, spoke, not intuited, uh, referenced of the town went, oh, no, 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 we like that corner. We like it the way. And so they walked away. That was 20 odd years ago. So that's why they're being slow and careful now.
Well, thank you.
Did on Great Island at all?
No.
Okay.
Any, any other, um, staff updates from you, Kathy?
Yeah, just a, just a few. Um, the virtual housing summit is tomorrow for anyone, uh, who didn't make the one on the 11th. It's tomorrow. Thursday at 2:00 PM. If you're interested, um, you can contact Mary Wagan and she will send you the link. It's kind of like a registration thing. She's at M Wagan. So it's M W A Y G A N. At yarmouth.us and she'd be happy to sign you up. I would also, uh, I don't know if anyone was able to look at Mastioti's, uh, 25% presentation for the Bass River Bridge and the four corners there. They did a great job with the graphics. Um, it's really kind of like a flyover and the flyover is on the town of Yarmouth's website under news items. So if you're interested. It's really, really interesting, um, the way they did that. The town and different organizations worked really hard, um, to get certain elements incorporated into the bridge to really make it more of a statement and gateway and not just a functional bridge. Um, and I think you really see those details in, in that, in that flyover. So it's very interesting. I just received and have not had a chance to look at it, um, but the Ca- Cape Cod Hospital has submitted their DRI for their cancer and cardiology expansion project. Uh, we are meeting with them, uh, on Friday, uh, just to kind of have them present the project to us. The vast majority of the project actually happens. Other than parking, happens in the town of Barnstable. And so all the major permitting will be happening in the town of Barnstable. But typically we, we do provide some comments, you know, with regard to pedestrian access, traffic. Um, there's been many concerns in that neighborhood about hospital traffic going through neighbors. But we will continue to do that similar to what we did when they were proposing the tower. I've seen some preliminary stuff. I think it's a much, uh, nicer looking project, uh, a little bit scaled back. Sometimes maybe taking a step back, you end up, uh, with a nicer product. Um, so I haven't had a chance to look at the binder. It's this thick, but, um, some preliminary stuff looks pretty good. The, I've been hearing some rumblings about the Route 6A subdivision. I got, um, some emails. So I think that that's going to be coming soon for the, uh, special permit for the cluster subdivision and, um. And the definitive subdivision. And that's it.
Okay.
Kathy, where was, where was that flyover?
Thank you.
I've not seen it on the news section, our updates, townwide news. And it's not on the front page.
If you go down.
Can you speak into the mic? So.
Can't hear you, Kath.
Yeah, it was there yesterday. I don't know where it is.
Yeah. So can you at least put the back on or have, uh, Mary Alice put that back on? So.
Or email us, you know, a link.
Yeah, but for viewers too, I think it's really important for them to see what's progressing, um, in that project. I would be really wonder, or put it on the planning, something.
And sometimes we think, set a time limit on it.
Yeah.
But I'll look into it.
But yeah, it's an ongoing project. So, um, maybe it's in GPW, but we'll see. Thank you.
Yeah, no, it's, it's certainly worth watching. So.
Yeah, it was quite impressive.
Hey, um, one question for Kathy on, um, any, anything bubbling on the, um. That we're working of that Sunoco station at the corner of Station Avenue and Old Town House?
Yeah, I think they're having difficulties, um, with septic because it's in, it's in the zone too. So they can only have basically 110 gallons. Per day, per 10,000 square feet. So I think they're running up against that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay then, uh, Kathy, we have, um, on the, on the official notice of meetings, um, I think our next meeting is the 16th.
Is it?
Yep.
Thank you.
No worry. Um, I think it might've been listed there as the 19th. And then again, on, on, um, on March, uh, March 2nd.
I would just emphasize the visioning presentation.
Oh, yes. Yeah, on February, on February 8th, next month, the next, next, next Tuesday. And you and I will, uh, uh, meet up on that. Kathy, you said it would be somewhat similar to what we've, we've done before.
Very similar to the December 1st, um, presentation. Um, I just would include, um, any other, any edits that we've made, uh, based on all of that input that we got and highlight that. I did, and, um, as, as you all know, the, um, the packet that was sent to the Board of Selectmen also included the presentation that was the summary for the second survey results. So if they're interested in that. I don't think we're going to go over that or anything, but I wanted it included in the packet so that they were aware. I think it was pretty, second survey results kind of very indicative of, we kind of hit it, hit it right the first time with a lot of, very much or, or fours and fives, which is what you want.
Right. But I think it also, um, picked up on some of the things that might've been missing.
Yeah.
Which was important as well. Um, so, okay, so, um, if there's no other business for us, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second.
Roll call. Will Rubenstein?
The I.
Susan Britta?
I.
Brad Goodwin?
Approve.
Liz Hartsgrove?
I.
Chris Vincent?
I.
Uh, Joanne Crowley, yes. Have a good evening. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you, Kathy.
Bye-bye. Bye, John Boy.